R O possession, back to order and I will please stand. Ready again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
There is no report up for session C G. I ask for a motion to adopt our agenda. Uh, any changes or additions to the agenda? Then, uh, all in favor, the agenda is presented.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, we have no recommendations tonight. It's a public comment for items that are not on our agenda. Uh, you don't see any, I don't see any blue cards. So we move to our reports, uh, student rep, this is my group.
Alright, over the past few weeks, there has been triumph in both school culture and sports. First off, A S E was successful with homecoming festivities, including our first two pep asept. Grade levels were divided to discuss spirit work and learned class tears that led into a school-wide chant. For all homecoming events, we had the biggest turnout in recent years. This Thursday, some L V H S students, including myself, will be going to Irvine Unified School District to present L V H S and how our student body was successful in the preventance of the Laguna Beach smoking ordinance. To support breast cancer awareness, L V H S will be having a school-wide pink out on Wednesday. On this Friday, Elmore will be having its annual boot blast. The production night of the living dead will open this Saturday. The teacher and administration preview will be this Thursday in the artist theater. Chloe Bryan wanted me to share that she is elite and would love if you all came to watch. On behalf of athletic director, Mr. Neal, the fall season sports are coming to a victorious end. Girls golf was Orange Coast League champions with seven L V H S golfers in the final twelve at finals. Boys water polo also won league and will have their senior night this Wednesday at four fifteen. Girls volleyball is undefeated in league. They will have their senior night tomorrow at five thirty against Foot Hill High School and will have their last home game next Tuesday. Boys sand volleyball had a great season and will have their league championships this week. Boys and girls cross country will be running next Monday in the Orange Coast League finals. They are both hoping to win league. Finally, this Friday will be the last home football game and senior night for football, band, dance, and cheer. The team is hoping to qualify for playoffs for the second consecutive year. This Friday's theme will be USA for the veterans who will be honored at the game. Thank you.
Where are the, where are the, uh, cross country, do you know where they're running at?
The Dina's High School.
The Dina's?
Yes, the regular course burned down.
That's why, that's why I'm asking, thank you.
So we have begun the evaluation process for teachers, which is new. And I think we're, everyone's on board and feeling fairly positive about it. Um, as I was looking, I asked teachers to share some goals with me that they had written to kind of see where they were, those who felt comfortable, promised not to use their names in sharing those. But as we were looking at the goals for the district, continuous improvement, it seemed like that was great. And so I thought, oh, these are all gonna go along with continuous improvement. But as I really read through them, I thought, okay, every student, every day in building relationships. So many of the teachers' goals were to be, um, connected to their students, to build social skills with their students, to use the mindfulness activities that we've been trained with, the E Q and talking about the emotional connection to their kids, which was great. A lot of the sped department is talking about that dyslexia specialization. And it's interesting because this year, for me, I have some new kids that need intense dyslexia skills and it came right at the time that, um, the legislation is coming out, pointing that out to be focusing on that. So we're excited about that. And I think it's a good opportunity to work with our administrators and also to take a look. I know that for me, writing down my goal, I think it's so weird because even the next day, I started doing better at those things just because I'd written it down. It's kind of like your New Year's resolution. So hopefully I'll continue. But, um, some teachers were saying, oh, we don't have to write it down. But we've encouraged our teachers to go and write something down because once you have it in writing, you're more likely to follow through with that. So we're looking forward to that. And we have a committee that will continue to look at that. See if it's working well for staff and also for the administrators.
Is that staff, um, at all the schools or just my school?
Oh, at all the schools, yeah. It was part of our contract. So it's a new, um, evaluation process.
Good evening. Well, the biggest thing I think that C S Y A has started this year, which the movement had started doing last year, was our psych representatives, our meeting with the principals at each site on a monthly basis. And that's really exciting. And I mean that from a sincerity that it's an open communication. Is there concerns? Is there positive things like having the P L C trainings? This has been really positive for classified to really hear what's going on, come up with some problems that they see simple as, you know, playground activities, how to have more coverage, and then go back and, and bring it to the principal and have a dis- open discussion. So we're doing that throughout the rest of this month, which is very exciting. Also, the site reps are actually receiving training at the Orange Field Office and after our meetings, C S Y A meetings. So then it's, everybody has a set way to do things. And actually, Dorinda Klein created a form for us, which is even, you know, keeps it right specific. And then when I had those forms, I can actually tell you exactly what's going on at each site because I'll have more input, which will be exciting. We still have our boot grams going on through Halloween. And for those that have sent in boot grams, thank you. Or donated, we appreciate that. And we have, um, an interesting, I don't know if Ms. Winston's gonna, we're gonna have a negotiations on November fifteenth prior to the end of this contract. And it's a positive orientation. That was that thing I was telling you about that's a little caveat, but it's very positive. And so we'll refine it as we negotiate. Am I supposed to say that, Lisa?
That's fine. Good summary. Thank you. Do we have any organization reps here tonight from P T A School Power, teachers? Even the board members, if you attended as a representative.
I have. Well, that's still not on my, uh, well, I attended the calendar committee. Yeah, yes. And it's, we're just investigating future members. It's very interesting. Went to, um, School Power and down at the meeting and, um, Mike was present and once again, watched all the ball part, shook some, shook some dollars loose. It was, as usual, it was impressive as usual and they were excited to be here. So we'll, thank you.
And the, uh, all in support of the C A C meeting that we would have had was canceled. Patty Williams brother was not at that meeting, which was on the killing. And then we did receive an email, which I just glanced at really quickly, about not being available for elementary.
Well, it isn't.
It isn't, but it did, they're talking about it, talking about it for, like, STEM labs at elementary sites. The grant money, the grant money.
Right.
But it's not all, I, I didn't read it carefully enough to really say.
Lot of conversations at state level related to C T E pathways being a K twelve continuum versus just currently being focused mainly at secondary level. So, uh, that will continue to be a conversation as we get to the budget here. And, and which is just around the corner, amazingly, as we enter November, the budget from the government will be January. Lots of ongoing conversations around that. I've learned quite a bit, uh, about some of the ongoing, um, developments at the state level at half my most recent meeting. And, uh, the deputy of, uh, public instruction, uh, not Tom Ferguson, but his deputy was presenting after using work. And, um, there's going to continue to be, uh, the, the goal of L C A and how do we continue to make it work well for, um, community members or staff or students, uh, without making it something of a, of a burden and user-friendly. And, um, as well as L C F F funding formula and what that will continue to look like, especially knowing we have, um, a, uh, election year coming up, um, with, uh, the governor and the public instruction, uh, superintendent public instructions also, um, up. So, uh, there will continue to be a lot of conversation, I believe, uh, from the next year and a half on a variety of topics, um, that are going to be education-related. So, um, on, uh, more local front, um, I wanna, again, just thank our, uh, our P T A and School Power. Two great events this last week. I'm sure you'll speak of that, was about them later on in potential year comments. But, uh, the coffee talk, um, was a well-attended event. It was very nice to pull off that, it was the two. Uh, I think it's a great venue, actually. Um, it was spread out, um, and quite a few people were there. It was, uh, standing room only, I think, in towards the table in the net. And then, uh, dodgeball, which I've been able to go over and watch quite a few of the teams. Um, I was really impressed with the gold pants that too, a W, was able to, uh, pull off. I wouldn't say you pull them off, but you, uh, I would do it, uh. They did not breathe, I can tell you that from, uh, standing next to Mr. Conlon, he was a little hot there. So he took second, uh, third place, I think, uh, the, um, L C Jenny over there. Get it right, is what she was saying. Her, her staff took second place. Uh, but again, just a great event, lot of smiling faces, a lot of kids running around. And, uh, I saw a lot of, yeah, so, quite impressive, those children were coming, so. And then last but not least, we do have, uh, one of our task force meetings on our social emotional support, um, which is coming up this week. We're also looking forward to that. And thank Dr. Keller's staff for the work they're doing around that. And I think we'll have a really good term of community development, which I can kind of expand on.
So, um, you'll notice we're having a board meeting on Mondays. Thank you very much. Because tomorrow is the Teacher of the Year dinner at the Disneyland Hotel in Orange County. Um, we'll be recognizing Hallie Day ever one more time. Uh, so that will be exciting. And then also, uh, to tab on to Minnie's comments, the evaluation committee does meet this week to review that first step in the process. We're committed to, to meeting again at each step in the process to review how things are going, to see what we can refine or tweak going forward. Uh, but so far, we are hearing positive things about the whole setting process.
So tomorrow night at the city council meeting, they're gonna talk about the top overall park renovations. And that's concerning, um, the, not just the improvements, but there's three large coral trees that, uh, overhang, uh, a good majority of the walkway. And, um, they're also gonna discuss the preservation of the turnaround drop-off that exists before you get into the school parking lot. I'm just looking at this.
I was curious when I read about that, is that archer drop-off?
No.
They're gonna make a new one.
It's currently there.
They're going to.
They are, but it's not.
It's in state.
And we had issues, I seen, I seen people have that.
It's new, yeah.
It's just not ours.
Right. So, uh, Mr. Conlon and I wrote a joint letter in support of the, uh, removal of the coral trees because it served as a severe danger for our families during drop-off at the times. Um, which we recall, the large tree has already fallen this year. It took out the power. Thankfully, it was lots of schools, we didn't have anyone there. But, um.
At that park.
At that park. And it's been identified by the city's arborist as severely decayed, all three trees. So it is safety issue and that's why we issued a joint letter. Um, so thank you, Mr. Conlon. Appreciate your help with that. And, um, that's all I have.
Hi, good evening. So we've completed our third or fourth, uh, trainings for, with the U C I history project for our secondary, uh, history, social studies teachers. We had a lot of good time to collaborate and, um, discuss and, um, spend time with inquiries, uh, instructional shifts. So we appreciate your support with that. Dr. Keller and I have completed our elementary P L C visits. We're visiting all of the P L Cs, um, across the district to talk through social emotional, um, the social emotional framework and our broader system and, uh, be really, uh, need to be and ask questions to give opportunities for discussing that. In addition, I'm spending time just asking around, how is instructional services doing? What can we continue to do better? Just, um, refining questions. So we've completed elementary, um, we're off to history, uh, to, um, to the high school and to Thurston. So, um, and been, um, embedded and just work around, um, the sidewalks. And I wanna thank our principals for walking with me. I appreciate that. Um, finally, uh, we are, we've started our pathways work for N G S S, so just we're grateful for your support. Thank you.
Okay, now we have, um, principal report from Denise Albert for Thurston.
Great, thank you. Uh, okay, so I could start with saying, we, I was back in August, uh, maybe two or three weeks and Lisa Brackes and I were walking out at the end of one day. And I was like, oh, I just don't feel like we're doing anything new this year. And she gave me a look like, get, get your stuff together, Jenny. Uh, of course, we're doing a million things. And I don't think I really realize it until I do a presentation like tonight to, um, really say we have probably one of the smoothest openings of the school year we ever had. Thank goodness. Um, I feel like things are really aligning. Our efforts are maximizing up at Thurston and people are really working together and it shows. You can feel it on campus. You can feel it in the classrooms, you can feel it outside. You could really feel it last Friday at lunch with seven hundred and eighty middle schoolers with the weather change. But you could just feel that things are working and moving forward. So it's really nice. One of the things that we worked on this year is trying to really focus our efforts, right? How you bring things in for a landing. So we're focusing, just like at the district, every student, every day, continuous improvement and building relationships. And what we're doing is during our cross-curricular meeting time, each year we like reevaluate how that time works, what we can do to best support the staff and the school. And this year, what we were able to do is during our cross-curricular meeting time, um, everybody on the staff, instructional aides, um, are classified, are certified, you can participate in one of these three committees. So every student, every day, we're focused on technology using our Bright Bite survey. Continuous improvement, we're focusing, focusing on academics using our CASP data. And building relationships, we're focusing on our California Healthy Kids Survey and our School Climate Survey. So the idea is that we're working on each of these subcommittees and then you can share back strategies for the whole, right? So things that can make a positive difference. It's kind of jigsawing the work. So tonight, for each of these three, I have a short little video clip with a little interactive, uh, thing for us. So hopefully all the technology will work. So as I move, we have Megan Mathias talking about every student, every day with technology. And then I'll stop and it'll ask you for, uh, what your opinion is.
This year, a team of teachers at Thurston got together to analyze last year's Bright Bite survey data. We decided to come up with some goals to increase technology skills here at Thurston. One of our goals is to increase student skills in.
So the question is, what are we looking at increasing our student, uh, efforts in? Is it Haiku, digital citizenship, or gaming and tobe? Digital, well, let's see what she says.
Digital citizenship. We have teaching purposes in our school to teach us about your online presence, web safety, and also successful online collaboration.
So.
You saw it, it's a great place.
I know, I know. And they help me do this too.
Has she seen that?
Uh, yeah, she, she's, but don't tell her again that we saw that. I mean, I think she could just wait forward with that. Um, okay, so what this committee, so we have a team and there was about ten, twelve people that attended this part of our cross-curricular meetings. Um, we realized that at Thurston Middle School, it is really time to teach and, and, and reteach our students about digital literacy. Right? They're at the age where they're aware of it. We do things on our campus. We have Cyber Cop that comes and talks in December. But we're realizing that having an online presence and, and digital literacy, like, just because this is a website that was the first one up on, on the web, doesn't mean it's always the right one. This is something that we need to focus on this year. And I think what we're gonna do as a committee is look at it, how we realize our strength at Thurston is coming up with a unified message, teaching it over and over in a variety of ways and a variety of fashion so that it's not one person's responsibility. That's how we maximize our efforts at Thurston. And I think that's something that we're really looking forward to this year. I know it's part of a bigger con- conversation when we start talking about digital citizenship. I think it's important, kids need to hear it over and over. It can't be that it's just being taught in that class. It has to be that we all own it, that we all share that message, that we all have those high expectations. I think it's difficult in middle school because they're given so much freedom about the whole area. So it's important for us to be teaching it over and over. We're also looking at the Bright Bite survey. That's a survey that we took last year. And I think it's important to dig deeper into the data to discover like, what does it really mean? Where can we improve? How we can support our staff? So if you look at it, some of the teach, when it showed up, one of the things that we focused on is, um, there is a certain percentage that are never using technologies. And at first, that doesn't sound okay at all, right? And then you start thinking, well, maybe that's the five P E teachers. And that's okay if they're not using technology out there, right? Or if they want to use technology, how can we better support them? I think that's what we're really trying to look at, is how we can support all of our staff. Maybe some teacher wants to use the technology or wants to delve a deeper into Haiku. How do we help support that on our campus? And I think that's another strength of ours, is our peer-to-peer support. So we love teaching each other. We have a great amount of knowledge up on that campus. Um, everybody is a great expert. And so we have learned a lot and, and it just really helps for our staff when we teach each other. So that's one of the things that we're focusing on with technology under our Bright Bite survey. So then we have Katie, I would say Myers, but it's Kiarty, talking about continuous improvement. So I think it'll go back to this video.
Our task focus last year is listening and speaking. After looking at our most recent data, this year we're focusing on.
Nineteen seventy-five. So we'll see which one we are focusing on. Let's see, that's a better shot of Katie, so that way I'll strike.
Listening and speaking, again, here at Thurston, we focus on continuous improvement. We feel that listening and speaking is an area that we can continue to grow.
So we, I shared up last time, we did listening and speaking. We focused on it. We spent a lot of time on it last year. We talked about it. I thought we did a great job. We didn't do the job that we needed to do. So we're gonna dig deeper. So we have one of our committees, and there was about ten to twelve that sat on this committee that focused on the academic or the CASP data. So the idea is this time, we're gonna go deeper into it. How many questions are on speaking and listening? We know it's one of four areas under Language Arts, but how many questions are there? I mean, you think you know, but then when you don't get the results, we need to dig deeper. What do they look like exactly? It's enough that it's actually showing that we're not meeting our needs or our students' needs, but like, what is it actually asking us to do? So we're gonna focus on that, on our, on our one committee that's, um, on continuous improvement. But then we do things that are right on our campus as well. On our M T S S, last year, we picked a list of kids that were two-twos on their CASP scores. Two in Language Arts, two in math. And then what we did is we provided that list or a slide of each student to our entire staff at our M T S S meetings. And we encouraged everybody to pick a student and focus in and support that student specifically. Um, what we did at our last M T S S meeting on Friday is we brought those kids back forward. And we said, these kids improved. And we highlighted them because we gave them the data. Your efforts last year, it made a difference. And what's really cool is we have learned to dig deeper into the data, that it's not just enough if they move up a band, right? From level one to level two to level three. Some kids increased by ninety-one points in Language Arts and still stayed in a certain level. So it's important to look at the data deeper to see, yes, they improved, but maybe they just didn't get over to that next band. But it wasn't like our efforts were for nothing. So I think it's really cool. And we're really excited at our next M T S S meeting. We'll do the same thing again. I think the best part is when you, we had that meeting on Friday and people saw the results from last year, they were like, can we pick another kid already? Can we do this again? I just think it's a really cool thing. We also have study sync, uh, which is our new English Language Arts curriculum. And our teachers are really doing an amazing job. I think what we are finding is that it's very difficult for our kids. It's really hard work for them. And we had one student really upset. They have a ninety-two. And they just feel like, why do they have a ninety-two? Why can't they have a ninety-nine? And it's like trial, that trial and error. And our teachers are doing a great job of messaging that to parents that we're learning these skills. It looks a little bit different, but we believe it will benefit us in the end, or benefit them, I should say. And we have our new I-Let curriculum, which is our E L curriculum. Megan Mathias has done an outstanding job with that class. I mean, she is absolutely amazing. Um, we realized that the, I think out of twenty-three E L students that were on our list last year, eighteen of them moved up bands, full point system. So it's pretty impressive. We also have our benchmark assessments, um, to drive our instruction. So Language Arts, using My Access this year, within the first week of school, gave everybody an assessment. Because again, it's not just about overall growth, it's about each individual's growth, right? Really making sure that each student grows, not just the gate students, not just the sped students, not just the E L students, but really looking at the data to give the pre-benchmark. And then the, and Language Arts teachers have decided how they wanna drive their instruction, what they need to cover. Oh, everybody already knew this? I don't need to cover this or spend as much time here. I need to focus on this. And then here at nine weeks, we're gonna be giving the same, um, or opposed benchmark so that we can look at the individual growth. That's our goal. So even if you started off and you were at a one, out of, out of a rubric of six on My Access, if, the goal would be that you would maybe go up to a three or a four, you know? That's still growth for that individual student. Uh, we're also doing that in social studies and in science. And it's really cool. The other day in science with N G S S, I was walking around and I saw Bjorn Avila, his sixth grade class, and his kids were running up and down like on the fire road. They were doing a heart rate monitor exercise lab and they were just loving it. The girls were running in their dresses and the boys, it was so much fun. But you go down and you see Richard Seeland and the kids are running around that building too. So they're doing similar exercises with the same benchmarks, holding them accountable. And I think that is just a huge, um, accomplishment, honestly, in a small district like this. Because what happens is you have two teachers teaching one subject and it's really hard to, it's either your way or it's my way. And it's really nice that they still have the individuality, but they're still held, the students, to the same accountability. So that is continuous improvement. So I feel like we're always working on that at Thurston. Um, and then we have building relationships. So we have Sarah Schaper, who will be talking about our third area.
And if we actually continue to build relationships here at Thurston, we're using the School Climate Survey data to improve school culture. This year, we're going to focus on building students.
There's a lot of things I could say here, but let's see, this is what we said. Well, for me, it would be three, ability multichannel. Can you imagine seven hundred and eighty students that could do that? That would be phenomenal. But we'll see what we're actually focused on.
Resilience. We know that mindsets are not fixed. And we would like to build a resilient mindset in our students by explicitly modeling and teaching the traits of a resilient person.
Okay, so one of the things that we're trying to do here is use the data, right? So we use the California Healthy Kids Survey and our School Climate Survey data from last year. We know that kids are gonna learn if they feel comfortable and confident being on this campus. And if you were at the coffee break when Dr. Keller did that whole cell phone, you, or you remember you sat and had to breathe deeply and look out at the ocean, I was like, really having a moment? And then it was like, take out your cell phone and unlock it and pass it to someone. And I don't even have anything bad on my cell phone, but just the thought of passing it to someone else made me really uncomfortable. You could hardly hear any of the other directions after that. I think it's important to note as a staff that if our kids aren't feeling connected, they're not hearing anything. Or we could have the best lesson in the world, it's not getting to them because there, there's something there. So one of the things that we've implemented this year is our counselors work tirelessly. Uh, I come running down the hall and I think they're trying to avoid me now because I'm like, I got another idea! Um, but our counselors, Nancy Morrissey and Jennifer DeMark, and our student support specialist, Ashley Bloom, are going in the second Mondays of every month into social studies classes. And we're doing mindful Mondays. And what's really cool about it is this morning, they've done it once, they did it in the month of September. Uh, I think they're doing it next month, next week. Uh, or I guess, maybe they did October and then they're gonna do November. Uh, I heard a kid this morning say, uh, it's Monday, are we doing our mindful Monday? So I think that's a really cool thing. Um, they go in, they encourage the kids to take that deep breath, just to be in the moment, really ground themselves so they can experience the whole day. Um, it's, it's a really powerful thing if you start thinking about a sixth grader, right? Imagine they could get ten of them in a year, one each month. By the time they leave Thurston, they would have had thirty exercises like this to practice mindfulness. And I think that's a great skill that will take them to the high school, right? So when they experience something that has anxiety, or it's a change, or it's something new, or they're feeling overwhelmed, they will have thirty opportunities to participate, which can be very expensive if you're trying to do it privately. Uh, it's just a great way for our kids to experience that. And I'm so proud of what we're doing. We've also layered on, we think it's really important, uh, the be an upstander or be the change, which is what it evolved to this year, is our No Place for Hate activities. And we really wanted it to be thoughtful, um, and meaningful on our campus, right? If it's worth doing, it's worth doing well at Thurston. And so what we have done, we couldn't have planned it any better this year. It's like one of those things that, once it finally worked out, it just worked out perfectly. Uh, Lisa kicked everything off with our Be the Change presentation. So she spoke to all the P E classes the whole day. I mean, just a lot of time and it really is a great effort on her part and the kids appreciate it. Then the following Wednesday, this is the first Wednesday of October, Language Arts gave a, an article about being in a new country and what that feels like and how it might feel to be different. And they did a reflective writing piece on that. So it was like an internal, they had the ability to think about it and write something out. Last Wednesday, our science department, because everybody does a little piece to contribute to the whole, which is what makes Thurston so great, science did a unity lab, which talks about everybody really comes from the same place, right? Our DNA, we originally kind of start from the same general spot and how it looks like as we move forward. And one of the cool things about that is our seventh grade science teacher, Aliel Bay, said she couldn't believe the conversations the kids were having in class, right? Because now they've heard it a couple different times from different peoples in different ways. And then this Wednesday, when we wear orange, right, to celebrate National Unity Month, uh, social studies will actually do a resolution of respect. And kids will pledge and then we'll put that up in the collaboratory. And it's just another great reminder that we have this ongoing message that we just don't tolerate that at Thurston Middle School. Um, so I'm really proud of everybody's efforts to make that positive difference for our kids. And then we have career talks. See, I said we weren't doing anything. And then we have career talks. So you know, last year, we have T M S talks and those are student-led, kind of a takeoff of Ted Talks. And they're during E S P. And so kids that have a passion can share that during, um, E S P in the collaboratory. And so kids that have a passion can share that during ESP in the collaboratory. Well, this year, we decided to do career talks. So it's 30 minutes, kids have the opportunity, after the counselors have done a survey, on my next move. Kids are identified and having a strength in one of six Holland codes. Realistic, entrepreneurial, conventional, there's six of them. So a kid might be saying, "You are really good in artistic," right? "That's your strength." So then we are hosting these career talks. We've had Chef Patrick from the local pantry at The Kitchen in the Canyon. We've had Janet Evans, an Olympic gold swimmer. Last week, we had Jason Freeze, he plays with Green Day. So kids can come in voluntarily, listen for 30 minutes, and be exposed to a variety of careers. The idea is that as we turn second semester, right in February, we'll bring them all in, we'll offer a passion project or a field trip to one of the six places that aligns with the Holland codes. So the idea is that the kids in seventh and eighth grade will have two, and this will be during oral history, that they'll be able to go out and experience two different career activities. So it's really cool. So, yeah, that idea is really big in everybody. Every time I'm like, "Let's talk passion projects," they kinda turn away. But we'll get it done, and it'll be amazing, because it's just what we do. So I think it's what we focus on at Thurston, every student, every day. So we're always trying to improve our technology and how we're connecting, and what, how we're using it. Our continuous improvement, our academics, always striving to do better, and our building relationships, which I think is the foundation of what we do at a middle school. And that's it. Thank you.
Any questions?
That's great.
I think I'll enroll and do it over again.
They did our middle school, I know.
So we have a new chart in our calendar. Our, hold a comment on a particular topic, and then the NUTS. I'd ask if the board needs anyone that needs to call anything off instead? No, that is commented on. So we have a motion to prove that items A2, alright?
I wanted to say, I appreciate our staff and the encompasses, I received the encompasses and the comments. And that visiting schools and learning things so well, and also teaching what we do so well to others.
Actually, I think that we need to separate out the minutes from our special meeting, because, oh, they're already got the same. Sorry. We can amend that, hope to make it items A2 through Y. And then, any other board questions that want to respond to this? One favor. Most that carries, and now we need a motion for A1. All those favor. I saw four items. Next, we have our information items, and we have a technology update.
Thank you. I just wanted to start by thanking President Vickers and members of the board for supporting the Technology Services team. We all talked about this, and we're very grateful to be here and work here in a place like this. And so we wanted to thank you for the support. Today, I just wanna review with you a few items, and we'll go briefly into them. We're not gonna, we're not gonna give you the high-level overview of those items and some unique parts. So not, not a lot of detail, but, but the highlights. So those are the items we're gonna go cover. Okay, so let's start with infrastructure. So one of the things that we've been working on, it's, this last summer, we distributed 600 more Chromebooks. And those, what we found is our Chromebooks, as they've aged, they're about four years old now, some of the older ones, we need to update them. And so we have a plan for that, and we regularly update our, our technology. We were maintaining about 2,700 Chromebooks, and we updated our staff computers too, which are about four years old as well. We updated about 160 of those machines. We also have 800 iPads that we maintain. So we actually have more devices than kids, which is kind of interesting. So when Amy does the LCAP numbers, it's kind of powerful, because some of the reasons we have more devices are we have specialized classes, like Final Cut, classes that really have to use a certain kind of computer. So we have, we have quite a nice ratio. And Mike Rush, Ignacio, and Robbie really work hard on that, on the devices, making sure they're maintained. And I, I wanna thank them for their work, because they are amazing and great workers, and really great people to work with. Ryan does a lot on the network, and so we updated, we had a special grant from E-Rate, from federal funds, that gave us about a 40% discount on our switches. So we were able to update about 40 of those. We updated our wireless. We added one feature that you might be interested in, that is a safety feature that looks for suicide kind of information, or, you know, hate kind of speech. It looks for things like that, and then it gives me a report if there's anything going on like that on the, going in and out of our network. So it's kind of an audit, safety auditing feature. And eventually, I'll probably have Dr. Keller take that over, but I'm just looking at it to see what kind of false, so far, they've all been false, which is good. But they've been, you know, interesting to read and see what, why they're being flagged. We worked on the LBHS bells and paging system. And we, we maintain about 196 access points. Those are the, the, those little things, the antennas, that allow us to get on the internet. And Ryan and our, our entire team do work on the servers and security together. The county developed a tool that basically talks about security for districts and for the county. And we walked through every step of that, that document. And every other month, we meet to review it, to make sure we're on the right track with security. We actually had a third party come in and look at our network from outside and inside to see if there were risks. There were no major risks, but we did have some minor things that we fixed. So that, that, and then we developed an incident process, so that my staff knows exactly how to report an incident, a breach, and it goes all the way up to Jason, at the highest levels, if it's a certain kind of breach. So we have that process in place. We have about 90 surveillance cameras in the district. And we also implemented, or helped implement Raptor with MNO and a variety of other people involved. So here's some data from the Bright Bite survey that Jenny mentioned. So every year, we take this survey. This has to do with the stripes were four years ago, and the solid blocks are from this year. So you can see that we've kind of, when teachers are ranking us as far as our speed of our internet, the excellence has just about, well, doubled essentially. So we, we're doing good. We have, if you see 1%, that's probably like one teacher. So one teacher thinks we're below average. We're gonna fix that somehow, I don't know. Talk to them. But there's gotta be a way to have, to be above average on this, because our internet speed is very fast, and we have good quality. So we, we're proud of that. We work hard on it. And Ryan helps maintain that network speed and the efficiency of the network. We have firewalls and tools to make it, make it run smoothly. We do have one risk that we've identified, so we kinda did, I kinda did that SWOT analysis. And one of the risks that we've identified in the department is, as we've added new curriculum, what's happened is it's become part of the daily work. And the new curriculum is, is, it's not just like, "Oh, you can take out the old textbook." There is no old textbook, it is the curriculum. So what happens is the, the network becomes so incredibly important that it's up all the time, you know, every single minute of the day. And even on weekends and evenings. So we, we realized this, and this is one of our risks. When we have times when, we had one of our staff members that had a family illness that he had to attend to, and when he had left, it was during a peak period. So that really hurts us, but it, and, and not only that, we had added a lot of new curriculum. And so we had these people that were out, and it was at a peak period, and our time doubled for getting to people. And so this is a risk that we have in the department that we're, we're looking to address and trying to figure out how we can address. So to illustrate this, Dr. Keller, this is, this is, you're familiar to you? So this is, he gave me this. And at the bottom, though, there was something I didn't know was there, but it's there now. And that is, this is Maslow's chart, it's Wi-Fi. Thanks for that info. And it has to become that way, it's become so critical. So I'm gonna give you some more, whoops, I'm gonna give you some more data here on the quality of support. And this was in form, we're looking to look at quality and speed, because those are two things that are important to us. So quality, when you look at the above-average and excellence, 66% of our staff say that we are above-average or excellent in the quality of our support. And we have that one teacher that's still 1%. I don't know. And then a total average is 4%. So both those concern us, so we wanna make sure we, we, we help every teacher, we have high quality. But we have done much better. You can see the excellence has nearly over tripled since four years ago. And then, let's look at the speed of support, which is also really, really important. And what I, what I like to look at is the three that are to the far left. Within 24 hours, same-day and one hour. I think if we can get to it within 24 hours, from the amount of staff we have, with six people, I think we're doing a pretty good job. So if you calculate all those together, we're right at 70%, which I think is, is doing a really good job. And you can see how it's increased. Our one hour has, you know, I don't even know what you call that, but eight times higher. And our same-day has gone up like three, three times as well. So we really have improved the speed, but it can always be better. It's our speed. And then we, I'd like to tell you a little bit about 4CLE, and just kinda tell you what the status of how many rooms we've done, where we're at, the status of kinda, what, what's next in the process. We've completed about 75 out of 130 rooms that we think are potential rooms to do. There are some rooms that maybe aren't potential, because they have to do with like, something that's gonna happen in the future, like that they're gonna do some work on, or maybe just not a room that you would normally do anyway. And so, out of the, out of the 100, I think we have 140 rooms, we've identified about 130 that we're gonna be working on. And we worked with facilities on this, and Mike Rush does a fantastic job with this project, helping this through as well. The next groups, as you can see, this is for this year. We, we have some special ed classrooms that we're working on, gonna be working on this year. We're working on a room at Thurston. Foreign language is up for the summer, so we're gonna be working on it in the spring. And I already just sent the email today to them to start that process. Elmore, it will be third grade, and Top of the World is third grade as well. So those are all on the slate for this, this year and in the summer. So just so you know what the process kinda looks like, we take them through a process where they visit the rooms that we've done already. And then we talk about the research behind what we're doing. Like, we try to think about, what are the main components? And is there research that shows that these things work? So for example, like audio amplification, there's three studies that show that it's important to us. One of them said that if you have audio amplification in your classroom, discipline problems go down. That was an elementary study. If you have audio amplification in a classroom, Language Arts scores go up, because they can probably hear you better, I'm assuming. And if you have audio, the most, probably the most important one, actually, if you have audio amplification in a classroom in middle school, this is a middle school study, teacher's stress levels go down. At the end of the day, they're less stressed. So you think about like, the things that we're trying to do, create classroom environments that are safe, that are comfortable, where teachers aren't stressed, straining their voice. That is a big deal. And that, that can equate to teachers being more ready to do things, being ready papers, in, you know, being more alert. All those things that are really good as far as stress is concerned. So that's just one study that we've used in the project, that we look at and we go to do these rooms. These, these teachers actually designed the room with paper first, so we took them through a process. So they have, I think you can see there's some stadium seating here on the bottom. I know it's hard to see there, but we'll show you how it actually turned out. So this is a, let's play that. This is fifth grade at Elmore. So if you, this is just a typical day, I walked into the classroom, there was no forewarning, really. And I just took some video, and you can see how the classroom naturally, you know, kids are in certain spots, they have their stadium seating, they're working on their Chromebooks. But they have areas they work together in groups, and they can project up to those TVs as well. So that's the kind of process you go through to create some really unique places to learn. This. Alright. So this process, we worked on over the summer, or last year and over the summer, with the English teachers at the high school. And we took them through the process of visiting all the rooms. They made choices about their rooms. They each have their own unique flavor that's in each of those rooms, I think. This teacher loves music, and so she has some albums on the wall that are important to her, that, that's part of the class. And she's actually had kids to think about designing their own kind of logo for themselves, which is interesting, based on these album covers. So she's working it into like that relationship building in her classroom. And I, I think it's fascinating the, the way they designed the rooms and the, and the thought process that went into them. This is one of the classrooms, English classrooms as well. Do you guys notice anything about the books?
Color.
Who said, "Who likes that? Raise your hand if you love this." I hear Lisa's having, no, it's, it's.
Beautiful.
Yeah. And the rooms are beautiful, and they are places you'd wanna go. They feel like, you know, just places you'd wanna learn. This is in another room, some color, color. And really nice areas to learn in those rooms. And this is the kind of smile that you get when a teacher loves their classroom. So this is Mr. Ruski's room, and he loves his room. He will pull you in and describe what he did and how it looks. He's already done that with several people that have visited. So just to give you a feeling for what those rooms look like. One of the things we try to do with the rooms is create, take one idea, some, something for each group, where that's something unique that they can try. Because we wanna still continue to push the, you know, try to be innovative. And so these teachers will look at some ideas. So one idea that we had was this, actually, Dr. Valoria had, Jason, was that, what if we use this microphone tool, and I'll show you how it works, to kind of engage kids more? And so I'll show you kinda what it looks like. This is in Mrs. Hampton's room.
So do you need Sam by this one?
Not necessarily. So here is, I have one here to show you. Called the Catchbox. So that has a mic in it, and as the kids are speaking, answering questions, they're talking into the mic. And we'll, we'll practice a little in this room. So there's a little battery to turn on the power. And the idea is, when it's in the air, the mic turns off. It has an accelerometer in, in this thing, so that it won't pop and, but if I talk into this, can you hear me that? Testing. I don't know. Okay, here we go. It's working. Does it work? So anyway, we'll try it out. And I brought this in because I thought, you know, we're gonna have questions, and yeah, maybe. But I also thought, you know, when people ask me, "How did it go with the board?", I can say, "Well, they threw things at me, I threw things at them." Here we, I'm gonna throw it to somebody, because you catch it, because you can catch. So you, you catch it, and then speak into it.
This is great, Mike.
Yeah. So that's the idea. So engages kids a little bit more. You probably wouldn't use it every day, but something that you might use on occasion, right? The, onto a different kind of subject. The technology leads and TOSs is working hard. This is, these are just two sets of classes that are being offered this year by the high school and by Elmore. Thurston and Top of the World also have their sets of classes they're working on that have to do with, you know, supports for the, the school. So the tech leads are looking at different things, like for example, wonders is a big thing at Elmore. So they're offering a lot of classes on how to use wonders, and how to, how to really use that tool wisely. and how to, how to really use that tool wisely, so that's kinda what the tech leads are working on for this year, one of the things. These are our bright light scores kind of over time, so you can kinda see how everything's kinda sloping up, which is a good thing. Uh, the last two dots are, that's a full year, even though they're close together. So, um, one thing, the, these are all within about thirteen points of each other, so we're all very close, every school's very close. And Thurston is still in the lead, not that she's competitive, but she's still at the top with, with her scores. But everybody's very close, but one, one thing you notice that with most of our schools, we have kind of a leveling out happening. And that's what we're seeing is, like, Jenny mentioned that thirty percent of teachers that aren't using tech on a regular basis, on a, on a weekly basis. And you'll see those, that data, but that's what we're seeing is, there's like this, these are the hard, these will be the hardest group to get going with tech, so it'll be a challenge for us. Those scores, by the way, are based on four different criteria, classroom, access, skills, and environment. And so, when you look at those scores, they really are basing them on a wide variety of things, the four Cs are a part of that. Like, it's trying to measure how kids, how often kids are participating in the four Cs and what's happening. So it's really, it's really based on a lot of different factors. This is the one that concerns me, this, this is to teachers, now students score this higher, because students are gonna experience multiple teachers. So when you see these scores, this is a teacher part of the survey. And it's asking them, do you ask plus your, your, your kids to collaborate with each other online, which is one of our key things in the state standards. And you can see we've done much better, we went from sixty-eight percent, that's a never down, to thirty-two, but all the schools are right around third. So we're right at that thirty percent mark of, there's a certain percentage of teachers that aren't maybe doing this on a regular basis, and that's what we, figure out who they are. And some of them may be PE, but some may not, some may be other teachers. So, um, so we're offering training, these are for classified staff. So this is, uh, Jackie's doing a lot of this training for classified staff for us, face to face, but also online, using Launchpad, this, this, uh, technique we have for doing, delivering online classes. So, these are happening, and these are the sessions that are happening this year, and, uh, we have a lot of participation in this. We had over a hundred and fifty people go through these classes, just the tech ones last year, so. The other thing that we work on is, with Roy and Jackie's, working on making sure our data has integrity, it's high quality, that it's, it's valid. And, and what we did, one of the tools we used is this tool called Certica. And basically, it gives each type of person in the school a report card on how they're doing with the data that week. So, for example, this one's discipline, so it's saying that there's some numbers, incident numbers that are missing in the data that they entered that week, and that they need to go fix them, because CalPad is gonna kick them back to us and say, hey, this isn't good data. And so it keeps, it's gonna keep our data a lot more clean, uh, we have one for the registrar, we have different ones for different people. But it's really helping to keep our data clean throughout the year. If the person wants to figure out what that means, they click there on that link, and it shows them exactly the students that this data pertains to. So they can go look them up and figure it out. Those are ours, those are from the company. The other thing we've been working hard on is getting everything with a single sign-on in B port, and we, and this is a study, uh, consistent battle. We, we have thirty-five student applications in the, in the portal now, and ninety-two applications total in the portal. So we're really trying to make sure that we try to get all the applications in here that you can sign into, because it's really frustrating to have to remember all those usernames and passwords. We wanna try to really use this tool as our basis to launch things, so we've been working on that. The other thing, that, this is in a great chart, but it, it serves as a point that I can at least reference what we're working on. Um, this is actually attendance by grade level, um, so it's kinda maybe interesting in that respect. Uh, and this is as of this time right now, this year. So we're trying to figure out how we can build reports and give the site's data that would be really relevant to them, so that they can do the models that they're working on to support kids. So one of the, the tools that we have is called an early warning system, and it would, you would take, you know, some aspect of the data and say, okay, this is worth this many points, and those points get totaled up to tell us that the student is at risk. You know, so you might take discipline data, attendance data, um, uh, counseling data, all this, all these different cut, type, data points. And the principals and the staffs are working on those right now, to figure out what data points they want. And then we put them into a report that totals a number for, for the students, it raises kids up to our awareness so that we can help them. I'm really excited, because Jenny's gonna look at that data compared to the, her, the traditional way of, you know, like, they've always, they, they have other ways that they've gotten these kids. And, uh, and kinda compare it and, and also kinda validate it, but also say, well, what are we missing, and what, what things are, are really, maybe we, we'll find kids that she didn't see in her processes normally, so. We're excited about seeing what that, what happens with that. And then the, the last project I wanna talk, well, the last one, is Rocket Ready. Just to give you a brief update on where we're at with the project. Working hard on it. And I wanna thank people that were involved in it, Dustin, and Carrie, uh, John, Andy, Alicia, and Jason have all presented, and Yadi. Really, um, have helped with the project last year, and really made it come alive and, and grow, and so it's been a good thing in that respect. One thing that, just to remind you what it is, it's, it is a game format, so they play a game, and they get points. The student, it's student outcomes based, so there are definite student outcomes that have to do with state standards usually, um, that are involved in the project. Uh, we emphasize digital storytelling, we had twenty-three teachers complete the project, and I can tell you that the number of increase in their Bright Bite survey data directly, well, I don't say directly, but correlated to the number of Rocket Ready teachers they had at their school. So if you had more Rocket Ready teachers, you had a higher increase in your Bright Bite's data. Uh, we, it was over seventy-five hours of professional growth that was involved in.
Can do it?
This is one teacher who painted her rocket gold, which I thought was cool, and framed it. So this is the results that, some of the results that Hanover gave us. And the, on the left is the district, uh, that is non-Rocket Ready people on the left, and on the right is Rocket Ready participants. So you can see, entering the program, this question is asking them, are you proficient or very proficient at, you know, you solving your own problems with your kids? And, uh, and doing that challenge, you can see the Rocket Ready teachers were a little bit higher up on this than the typical teacher entering the program, but the gains were higher, uh, as well, if you look at the percentage of gain. So, I thought that was a really telling data point. The other one that was even more, uh, interesting was how teachers rank themselves, uh, using technology in the classroom. And so, you can see the Rocket Ready teachers were actually a little lower than the rest of the staff going into the project, but coming out of it, they were much higher, as far as their ability to integrate technology into their classroom. So they felt, they feel, they're either proficient or very proficient, extremely proficient at do, at doing that. So that's a good thing, this is a good, a good sign for those people that, that work through that program. These are the three years we kinda mapped out for the program. So, in the state standards, if you look at, like, what's in the standards for technology, there's three that show up over and over again. They are collaboration online, listening and speaking, which is presentations and communication, and research. Those are the three things that are in the state standards, over eighty-eight times, they're in there for technology. And so, we wanna, I wanna make sure this program at least had those components as we went through each year. So the first year, we focused a lot about collaboration, the second year, we're doing listening and speaking, and the third year, you see on the top, we're doing research, we're looking at research. We haven't developed that yet, but that's the idea. And then on the first year, if you look at, like, as far as what the, what the teachers are experiencing in the program, we, we saw a Gallup survey that showed that teachers ranked themselves like second, uh, as far as being a noble profession, uh, compared to the other professions. Doctor is number one, but they rank themselves just under a doctor. So all these other professions, they rank themselves high. The problem is, when they ask them a question, are you satisfied with teaching and do you feel connected, seventy percent of them said no. I don't feel satisfied, I don't feel connected. So teachers, I think, because they work with students all day, and maybe their grade level or their subject area, they're not feeling in connection with the district as a whole, and with other people. And so, it's really important that we develop teacher relationships, and this project paid teachers and encouraged them to develop relationships with other schools, in our district, other grade levels, other curricular areas, and so we saw that happening in our district with this, with this project. So the first year, we focused on that, the second year, Michael, Dr. Keller is gonna help us, uh, with integrating center relationships into the project. So, what activities can you do that, that would help with forming social relationships in your class? And they're gonna be earning points for that in, in this project, so what, that'll be part of their, the project this year. And then next year, we're looking at trying to build leadership with that team, what can we do to have them step out and be leaders? So this is just a quote from one of our teachers that was in the newspaper, actually, recently. So I thought that was good, um, to talk about engaging students and how we, how we can keep them connected, and she felt that did that work. And then the last quote I wanna share with you before questions is, um, from the state superintendent, which he, he, he said about a year and a half, two years ago, about our district. And I think, I feel like we're living up to some of this, I think, we've had over a hundred visitors from, uh, all over the world, Sweden, Australia, Russia, uh, and all over California come and visit us for four CLE and for other reasons. And I think, so we are, I think, living up to some of this, uh, idea that we are building a culture that, that should be replicated, and can be re- replicated. And that is it, do you have any questions?
Mike, who are the other two districts?
Uh, Long Beach. And, I don't remember the other one.
Was checking how competitive it was.
Oh, yeah. I am competitive.
Any questions? Who are our TOSAs?
The names of our TOSAs, there's two at every site, so it would, the high school kind of has three, because there's a, a teacher on special. TOSAs versus tech leads, they're two different things. So TOSAs, we only actually have John as a TOSA, he has a period off for tech, that's really our only tech TOSA.
So that's a really different.
Yeah, but the tech leads, we have two at the sites, and those are different people, not every year, but they rotate through people.
Right, so just whoever.
Whoever volunteers, and they get hourly pay for that.
And do you do special training for them?
Uh-huh, yeah, as a matter of fact, on November ninth, we have a training that will be with them, they're gonna be involved, and we have, uh, really good presenters from, from Q and from, uh, from the state to come down and, and talk to them about trends in technology and how to address the thirty percent, that's what we're gonna focus on. How do we, how do we attack them?
So that thirty percent, oh, I mean, is that fatal, or? I mean.
It's not fatal, and I, I think you, I, I wouldn't be honest if I didn't say it's, I'd probably unrealistic to get every single teacher.
Right.
So you're, you're, but there's a percentage of the thirty percent we can get, and we, we can get them to, to use tech. They're probably just not people that volunteer, they're people that you might need to encourage or invite, or work with, and say, hey, I'm gonna come in your room and help you do something, and see what they say. And so we're gonna, we're gonna do a variety of techniques to try to get those teachers to, to try things.
And it's thirty percent pretty much across the board at, at all, for instance?
Yeah, it's awesome, yeah. Within it, two percent, on either side of thirty.
Yeah, so Mike's been, we, we had a lot of discussion about how do you reach out to that, that group that's still has been, uh, it's not reluctant, it's a great word, I think. Uh, sometimes it's, the, the technology hasn't worked for them, and they wanted it, um, and, uh, so they're apprehensive about going back in and, uh, giving it another shot. Uh, sometimes it didn't work the way that, that they intended, the outcome wasn't as high as they, they wanted, um, so, uh, some of it just not trying to. So there's a, a variety of ways by which we can, you know, support our teachers, and so Mike's, has been really thoughtful about, hey, we've been doing it this way for a long time, it's time to shift, because that last group is still that last group, so, as you mentioned, you know, it may require, uh, more of a one-on-one or sit down, or, um, an opportunity to say, how can I help you? Um, uh, or have you thought of, uh, a certain, uh, strategy, uh, or teaming them up with staff on the campus who already have been doing some things, uh, really well on the tech side of things? And not that we believe that tech is the answer for every single thing, um, but we definitely want our staff to be able, be comfortable and find ways that which they can utilize technology to improve outcomes.
Cause it really is, it is part of the standard, right?
It is.
And, and just, I mean, just in the short amount of time my kids live out even, it's just ubiquitous in the cat, in the classroom, so, I mean, it's just shocking to me when I walk in, how much they're using.
Yeah, and I think, I think there is.
They're using it in a course load.
In a virtual.
Yeah, and then it's, it really is, probably in course load.
And I think there's an interesting thought process on, are we using it for the right reasons? I know, at the right time, so focusing on the three things the state's requiring of us, I think is really good. Uh, and we have a whole track where we're looking at digital literacy and, and, uh, computer science, and that'll be part of kind of weaving that into other subjects. Um, I know one of the tech leads, as far as the thirty percent, has proposed doing social, more social things with these few teachers he's identified, and saying, okay, I think I can meet them on a social level, relationship level first, and then build it, throw in the tech.
That would still work, that would still work for me, cause I've lived in this one, well, I'm at that thirty percent, that's why I'm failing. In some ways, yeah, in some ways it can be a game of luck, because there is so much. And so, and perhaps with more direction on how to pick something that would work in their classroom, and they would be comfortable to work with their subject matter, but it's insane, I mean, there's just, when I, you know, listen to your presentation, I think, what even, I mean, how do you guys do it? I mean, how do you do all this stuff, how do you keep it all straight, how do you do, like, have to be six places, six places at once?
Special.
And it's, there's only six of them, and, and you guys have it handled, I mean, I, I couldn't work in a department. It's, it's complex.
Well, I, I, I will say we have a really great team, and they, and they're, they're working really well together, and it does help that they care about the kids, and they care, like, one, one of the things that touched me, and we were talking about what, what, what makes you smile, we talked about this the other day in staff meeting. And my staff said, which I like, I, the one, two of them said, I love it when I help the assistive technologies, the kids that need help with some technology. That's what he loves, cause he gets to see the results, so he, he, and two of them actually said, that's one of their favorite things to do, so they have a heart for this.
I just had a question, wondering whether you're getting increasing Chromebooks, is that partly because of having more kids have Chromebooks, or they're using their own phone?
Um, we're, we, it's still similar, I would say yes, at, at probably Thurston, we have more, less BYOD, uh, than we had in the years past, so that, that's true at Thurston. But at high school, it's very similar, uh, when you get into the senior level, it's about seventy percent of the kids bring their own, thirty percent are supplied by us. And then it's reversed at freshman, it's about, it's the reverse of that, so.
I just thought of you for hearing something last year, somewhere near that there, that there was some problem with kids with their own device, because it wasn't subject to our, remember, there's our limits, and so that they were.
We had to, we made them install this, because they're using our network, they installed a certificate, um, that, uh.
So they did that, right?
So it's certificate that actually went on their computer, uh, through their browser, uh, because again, they're using our network to get into the county network, uh, it's all fun and simple to the county, so it was one of the album issues for us to, to maintain, so some folks, sort of, it's just easier to, you know, it was, it's easy to do, having, having done it for my own child, but, um, sometimes we said, oh, it'd be easier if we, you know, used one of Chromebooks, the district provides some options.
And the other is, um, the care of, how's that working?
So, it varies, a little bit by gender, uh, here in the state, as a male person up here, but the, but there is, uh, some variance on the care that's given to the Chromebooks. We do have quite a few that come in that are broken or problem, the, what we tell the parents is, this is the cost of that, what that costs, and most parents would pay that. But some parents couldn't afford it, and then that's just gonna go, we're just gonna give them whatever they, we're not gonna, you know, charge people that can't afford that. So, um, so basically, that's how we work it out, is just, uh, just by looking at the problem, identifying, you know, the cost, and giving it to the parents.
So, similar as, as a place in textbook, that's damaged or how they do it?
Yeah, we have it built into the budget to, as a refresh plan, so, uh, Jeff and I worked on, like, getting it in the budget, every year, there's about six hundred that need to get phased out, and you just cycle through those, I know it seems like a lot, but it's, it's, uh, it's every four years, every four years.
Mike, you had, um, touched on processes for breach, and, um, where it goes when there is, and have we had any?
No major breaches at all, really, in, in our district, I mean, we've had some, uh, suspicious stuff that we, we were concerned about. We had one student that we had to work with, that was more of a hacking, like, I, I would call it hacking. Uh, so we had to work with the student, um, but nothing really major that would concern anybody's data. So really what it is, is if, if your data was released as a board member, or my data, or a student's data, we would need to have a process to notify the parents, and tell, and tell you guys, the board, and Jason, hey, this is what happened, just so you know, uh, that we've, this is the, the steps we've taken to notify people what happened. But we haven't had any major issues. But we haven't had any major issues.
I I appreciate you discussing that transparently and and having a process in place to deal with it. And I hope that student that was trying to hack is in the computer science class.
In what?
Is in the computer science class.
Okay.
We're using their talent well.
For good.
Yeah, for good, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My next information item is. First quarter report, any formal claims for the ways, please, don't please. Happy to report?
No complaints.
Thank you. And then we have our monthly financial update, August September.
Thank you, President Vickers. There's actually very few changes from what you saw on the last month's report. I do apologize if you did not get the O P E P trust information in the quarter, uh trust update times we won't be getting here. Uh but we will include that in our next monthly report.
Any questions for Jeff on this report?
Nice to see the A L B so money transfer. Um I just wondered about the net account billing option. Can you talk about not? Could you just back that a little bit? It's on sixty-two, sixty-two, it's a little bit different for the board. It's an option whether to bill or not.
I have to, can I?
Oh, that's mine, sorry, yeah.
May I raise that a little bit specific?
I I thought we had, we're talking about not doing some of the better count billing for special ed because it wasn't really worth it for certain.
Right, it's the the income that's generating uh is changed.
And you have to do it.
And so we have um some discussions about um is it uh effective for us to be able to continue to do that? Knowing that it's changed in the dollars and cents that go in at the time.
Yes, yeah.
And we could, there's uh the mandated costs related to some of these programs cannot work at the time for us, especially in our size. So uh we've had some discussions with uh professional education and I think we've come to the conclusion that uh we'll probably move away from doing that in the future at this point. Um until and unless something changes. Uh which again, every so often they change the set of rules and allow us to go back and do it again, but uh you're saying yes. It's a small amount of dollars in.
Right, not worth the effort that it took to do that.
Yeah. We're working with this way, having um steps and effort that this time it's unchanged.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we now move to our action items and the first item, uh approval of our policy first reading. And these policies were the ones that we have had at our workshop, the board wants to. For Sunday.
Sure, alright, so uh it was a great meeting, I appreciate um the the time and the the energy that went into that. Um we have twenty-eight uh policies for uh first read tonight. Um and again, we went and spent several hours going through these, uh just specifically these. And I think that the process is helpful uh to be very focused on those policies and uh the board received great comments. We also had our um staff, our attorney president as well. And he was able to provide some feedback on the policies and be there to answer questions. So I um the layout of this is that we have a policy number that is recommended by C S B that will become our policy number. The title of the policy and whether it is an update or a brand new policy for the community special edition. Uh for the sake of time, I don't know that it would be to us, you know, read every single one. If you'd like me to, I would happen to, but um I just don't think that would help that she would like to see.
We like to wait for the name.
Oh, right, uh yeah, a couple of time now.
I mean, it's gonna have a team of people who play well.
And I just wondered, do we need uh to vote on agents separately?
This uh this is a first read only, so um if uh I believe you'll bring them back for action on the second read. Unless you plan on pulling in um now and providing action on them, but um there's.
So once you're uh you're consent, there is any policy that a version where this company wants to take out. It just turns, we just started the questions. Okay. So then we could move to this like group um to come back. How to comment on the policies for first read. Okay. So we move them as when we are tired to come back to the second read and go with the motions. So it's a little, we had a discussion. Next one, second.
I know you're doing this. Okay, so big and okay. Now, this is probably obvious, but we just wondered on number five, the transportation for students with disabilities. Now, so do all special ed students receive, oh, it's number six. Re- receiving free transportation or does it have to be in their I E P? How does that work?
Uh as the state said, a specific use of student shall be the consideration of I E P team to determine assistance transportation.
So it has to be in the I E P.
It's my team decision.
I just want to clarify that because it talked about if they were uh kicked off the bus or something, that we can still have to provide their transportation.
Right, if it's written into I E P.
But only, it's not every I E P.
No, no, so it's the needs on the second paragraph of the policy, it specifically calls out that it would be done in I E P.
Okay, and then for number thirteen, that best contract. Um so do we have surveillance monitors on all my bests?
I would speak about getting that information put together for amendment to the existing contract. But I received the proposals and I just need to go ahead and discuss.
Okay.
We can discuss that and I'm gonna.
That's a very good experience.
Only ours does two from the data and not the data we're here for.
Okay, all perfect.
That's it, okay. So we have a motion on the duty, new policies or different policies, one to twenty-eight, bringing back the second read. I favor, I oppose, here is five votes. Our next action item, where it is seventeen, approval of change order number one. We may now the fourteen thousand two hundred and one to best contracting services for L B U S D roofing replacements at various sites.
Thank you, President Vickers. Um this relates back to the project, the roofing project at Thurston and Elmore Elementary School. Uh the bulk of this change order applies to Thurston. As we removed a lot of the shingles, the the plywood decking that it was attached to was very rotten and loose. So we needed to replace it with new, uh that's one of the requirements for the warranty actually on the new moving tiles. Um there was very minor minor cost, less than a thousand associated with Elmore. Which had to do with installing the new gutters and they made it a little smaller than the existing old ones, so we had to paint and touch it, touch it underneath them so it matched the rest of the building.
Public comment on the site. Any board questions? Motion please, seven second. Here on the table, uh any discussion? On favor?
I.
Oppose, here is five votes. Action item eighteen, approval to authorize filing of a notice of completion for best contracting services for L B U S D roofing replacements at various sites.
President Vickers, this has to do with the same projects I was just referring to. The projects are done in full completion, Mr. Zavis received the consent letter from the contractors stating that change order was final and the project is done. So with the permission, authorization, we will file with the county office for final.
Any public comment? Any questions for the board? Motion please, I'm sorry, I can't say. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I oppose, here is five votes. Uh item action nineteen, approval to award a contract for architectural services to root out hard architects for L B H S stadium, restroom and storage building. L B H S main office renovation, L B H S main quad modernization and the preparation of updated site plans for district-wide school sites. At a cost not to exceed one hundred thirty-eight thousand.
President Vickers, so I'll start first with the um main office renovation and quad modernization. We've talked about this, uh creating better workflow for the main office. So this will include developing actual plans, but more of a schematic um design that we can look to. We possibly do on our own, I don't think it's something we need to take from the state architect. But they'll at least facilitate these planning meetings and help us design with the appropriate layouts for um for pass travel and security. Um the main quad modernization, now in addition to adding more seating, uh we want to look at the quad in its entirety. So what we're gonna do is master plan that for furthering, improving our our uh pass of travel. And also hopefully increasing the seating beyond what we've already done and we will continue to do. Uh the stadium restroom and storage building, that is formerly known as building P. And we'll have a lot of information on that during the study session when we hope to get feedback and input on what we've come up with so far in our layouts. Um and the last one, I almost spent maybe thirty seconds on, but I think it's extremely important. We don't have currently scale drawings of any of our sites, so if you look at our safety emergency plans, um they're not really up to date with with what you'd see on a architectural design drawing. Which um I think we can greatly improve, so this will show us a larger picture with scale of all of our buildings, all of our doorways, entries for ingress, egress, as well as some surrounding streets. So that we update our emergency plans, evacuation routes, um it gives us something more scale to work with. Now, another application of this is it actually will help us with the rekey because we have to identify every door in the district. And although we have all of our plans, they're not all together. So we have some of the modernization and we have uh some of the two thousand and one modernizations, some of the nineteen ninety-three modernization. Trying to blend that all together is a lot of work, so we'll have some also up-to-date scale drawing. We call those one A diagrams, so it'll help us with not just our projects that we have coming up, but also uh helping improve our safety plans.
Any public comment or questions?
I know you talked a little bit about redoing the teachers' room at the high school. Is that, are we gonna just do that ourselves, not as part of this one?
That is actually included in the uh main quad modernization.
Oh, that's part of the why, okay.
Yes, it's part of that.
Then when we get those um updated school site plans, we will provide those to uh first buyer.
Absolutely.
So that they have, because I know they use their practice and kind of familiarize and I know they have a lot of new personnel.
Yes.
So they would, they would need that.
Yep.
Updated and we always felt that they had it, so it sounds like it has, wasn't as proposed as we thought.
Yes, we want to not just provide it to them, but we'll also put a copy in each one of the knock boxes outside of the campuses so that they're more accessed.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose, here is five votes. Actually, item twenty, award contract for geotechnical services for L B H S stadium, restroom and storage building. Project to Southwest inspection and testing in eight in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. Okay.
Thank you, President Vickers. So this is also related to the uh rep new restroom storage building out of the stadium, formerly known as building P. Uh we need to have a geotechnical investigation completed. Now, we submitted uh requests for proposals and received three. The lowest being from Southwest, which is you see here, the base being the nine thousand forty-one dollars and fifty cents. Received from United Heider, uh cost of eleven thousand dollars. And R M A group, a cost of ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars, so about two thousand dollars less. Now, as we looked at the location and placement of the new storage um restroom building, there's the slope that sits adjacent to it that can be a significant factor for us. Especially as we turn it into the state architect. So we added that after we got all the uh base of the boards back. Asked them to improve the same assumptions they used that got them to locate it in the first place. And so with that addition, that's what it's like from nine thousand forty-one dollars and fifty cents to what you'd be improving tonight with the additional eleven thousand four hundred and eighty for that slope, looking at that slope for the new building.
Public comment? Word questions? So that slope is as guys see it looks to me when I walk.
We're gonna find out and we're gonna hit there. One of the things they're supposed to help us do is look at the impact of the building's placement. And if there are possible adjustments for any stabilization we're seeing this. We we wanna do that now, we wanna go on to that for that year.
That's, no, gosh, why? I just think, you know.
Just gamble, throw some dice and see how it goes. Why do you call it formerly known as P? I'm just curious.
Oh, it's our plans.
Again, the in the modernization, it was drawn in a first, yes.
It was called building P, right? Okay, no contest.
It was a big.
Maybe you know the delay it and we had a lot of like cost at that time and we delayed and how the cost would be escalating.
Okay. But it's not the same plan as building P's plan, is that right?
Building P never got to that actual.
Never.
Never happened, okay.
It worked a good time.
I feel like we're all the humans, correct? Sorry, it's just natural. Okay.
Except what's under the concrete, which is almost going to be assessed.
Gotcha.
Uh there was an intent to put it there.
Right, okay, now I'm still there, remember.
And so they're doing that work before they put the new concrete down.
Okay, I just.
Yes, there are utilities already out there.
The references, right. Thanks. Formerly.
Yes. A motion, so it's a very good. And then I had asked, that's why I asked you, because often you see the names of the firms that bid and so this was the, those bid and they all bid on both these contracts?
Yes, you just only, I'm sorry, include agenda.
Thank you. All in favor?
I.
Any other discussion, sorry, I'll pitch this off. Favor, I oppose, here is five votes. And now we have board member requests, I have future meetings, request for information, or general comments.
I have none. Um so I do have, I I get to go to um Washington D C and um the museum of Congress, all wonderful. But I also get to see Senator Senator Warren Ski at the National Museum Law Center. But it's their forty-fifth um anniversary and um I just, and I got to sit with her staff, a person who works on education policy. So I just wanted to share a role because the three major things really tie to what we do. And it was so I go online, I was gonna write down some stuff, she said I won't do it justice, but you can't go online and watch her speech and it is moving. But the three things that she felt tied together, and these aren't all her bills, one was her bill. And the other two were, one, she was really talking to all of these lawyers. About, yeah, about what they should, they could be working on and really what they can make a difference with. Was um one was that scheduling employees and because if employees have set schedules, not not at this level, we're talking any greater. Then they can have set childcare and the biggest roadblock for women is childcare. Another one was support for childcare, which is probably seven percent or less for their income. And then it's just supporting people who couldn't pay for that, so that everyone get childcare, it's tied to education. And I don't remember the bill, so I haven't. Um it's really tied to that education that starts at being younger for public education. And then goes throughout your lifetime, coming in and out of education based on where you might have exited, based on having children or some like change that you took up. And how you could come back in, whether you were going back in to get your G D or you're going back in to finish your master's work. And it's obviously fascinating, also seemed overwhelming, complex, and I seen this man in the parlor who was breaking it down beautifully. But her speech doesn't just was mine, it was not. It really did tie into the big picture of what the roadblocks women hit in having children. But really about how fundamentally different education, if you, if you look back to the equality versus equity, if it all has the same principle of education, what he can do.
Well, I share. Yeah, I'm good. Um I did really enjoy the coffee break with Dr. Laura, a really long name. And it's it's a strategy for managing childhood anxiety and stress, but she, it was more, I mean, it was teenagers, it was more than, I thought it was just a little bit. There was a lot of interest, she introduced Dr. Keller and then there were a lot of people coming up to thinking, I don't know what they were thinking. I mean, but there were a lot of parents who were very interested and had specific things that they need help or advice for their children that. Um I also wanted to talk a little bit about the new exhibit at the art museum, Pacific Standard Time, L A to L A. Which means Latin America to L A. The Laguna Art Museum is just focusing on uh the time of the missions to the ranchos. But the Getty Museum gave sixteen million dollars for this to be done all over California. And the Laguna Museum has spent four years getting this together because we had to borrow so much art from different places. And we could have never done it without this huge grant from Getty. It's the only time all this art will be together and getting some of it out of Mexico has been uh lots of begging and pleading and arm twisting. So I would really encourage people to go. It's almost more of a history lesson than art. We did an in-service for, a free in-service for teachers in Orange County, we had thirty-eight come, unfortunately, no one from Laguna. But Bridgette did take the. But uh Bridgette did take the information, and was going to encourage, especially for the grade, it's exactly what they do to.
Perfect.
And um I worked on the fundraising for buses, and I'm thrilled that kids are gonna come and use the buses. But I'd really like our kids to come and use the buses too, because it's, it's just an exceptional part of our history. And how California came out of Mexico, came out of Spain, and we think back, if you had been born, I don't know, maybe in eighteen-ten, you would have been a citizen of Spain. And then you would have been a citizen of Mexico, and then later in your life, a citizen of California. And in those days, because we didn't have technology, you might not even know for a year that you were a citizen of another country, because they went around on horseback to let you know. Anyway, that's, that's, it's, it's here until the, towards the end of January. And museums all the way from San Barbara to San Diego are doing parts, but our part is unique for us, some are more focused on South America, some more modern.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you. Um I just wanna say that I noticed that the P T A, what they're putting out on their, on their email newsletters, are, they're really providing more information than we have in the past about, about what we're doing, with things like with the respectability or with the Thurston, I mean, they're, they're giving that, using that as a vehicle, and I think that's really beneficial for the parents. I also liked what they're, they're doing at Almorel, with the staff interviews, I think that those are really fun to read those. And the different ways, some are give really expansive answers when they're interviewed, but you learn something about someone, which I think is really that building relationships, even though it's not in person. That when you really can, so oftentimes, you have something in common with someone that you didn't even realize, because this doesn't come up during the workday. So I really, I think that's a good, a vehicle that you're, that you're doing that. At Thurston P T A, Dr. Keller gave a great presentation, and Keta was also there, and I think it's something particularly that age parents are really, really need for that kind of information, and understanding what, how we're focusing on the social emotional learning, and what kind of supports that we are being placed. That, but that we, but that also that we're not doing all of it, that it's providing parents with that information. And so how to recognize things that they can do, help them in their parenting. The the dog's wall was great, it's just, it's a little crazy.
It was funny.
A little, little dangerous for some of those, not to get injured, so that they are working the comp the next day.
They have to sign a waiver.
She signed one last year.
I saw that.
Please, please, and they, we did reissue Jash.
I missed it.
Yeah.
And I just have to, one last thing, which is, I, I read, I've read several columns, and everything's written about the end of the fourth range mission projects.
Oh, gosh. And the second one, the virtual issue that we had on.
Some of them are really hysterical, from the parent's perspective of how they had to do it.
Oh, my gosh.
And that, that other parent shouldn't get out of that.
That's a human project.
And it was not, it was something, I couldn't, we're, we'd sell it to the next.
We're all kids, right?
I mean, I have no, I have no idea, so I could, gotten next to it, but it's just, it is funny, since that shot away. Okay, thank you. Um um more soon to adjourn, our next meeting will be uh regular, you need to stay in over fourteen, in the boardroom. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, thank you.